Good evening. The meeting of the Monroe Township Board of Education will come to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May we have a roll call, Mr. Gorski?
Certainly. Mrs. Koloponowicz?
Here.
Mr. Chiarella?
Here.
Ms. Antelis?
Here.
Mr. Braverman? Mr. Kaufman?
Here.
Mr. Klein?
Here.
Mr. Leary?
Here.
Mr. Masters?
Here.
Mr. Tesler?
Here.
Mrs. Ferroni?
Here.
Madam Board President, you have the quorum.
Thank you. In accordance with the provisions of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law, the Monroe Township Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted January 13, 2012, one at all schools, two home news Tribune, three Cranberry Press, and four filed with the Clerk of the municipality. At this time, we will have reports from our student board members.
Good evening, everyone. The events that took place or will be taking place this month are the following. The DECA Regional Competition was on January 10th, many people placed dates. There was a half day on January 13th for staff in service. School was closed on January 16th for Martin Luther King Jr. And also, Winter Dinner Theater is January 19th to 20th in the cafeteria. College Planning Night is held January 26th, 6:30 PM, in the auditorium, and the second marking period ends on January 27th.
Very good. Thank you. This time, we will go to public forum. Anyone wishing to speak to the agenda, please come to the microphone and state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Chrissy Skirby, 8th Seminole Court. Actually, if I could just give this to Dr. Hamilton. I'm from RCTI for the refreshments for tomorrow.
Okay. Thank you.
For the Budget Steering Committee. 8th Seminole Court. The question I had is on Item F, the Annual School Election Resolution. I wanted to know, I know at the last meeting it was discussed, has the governor signed into bill, or signed into law, the bill that would give Board of Educations the right to take away the vote on the school budget?
The governor signed it into law yesterday.
He did. Will this Board of Education, will it be considering that this evening?
We will be.
You will. So if you pass F, you can then decide after that to take away the election of the...
Well, we couldn't do both, so we would probably have the resolution for the change of election dates, and then if that passes, then we would have to eliminate the other. We would have to eliminate F.
And G.
And G. G and F.
Is there another resolution in the agenda to do that?
We have a resolution that we will be reading during the meeting.
Oh, okay. Well, as a concerned taxpayer, I just wanted to speak to that for a second then. I'm concerned with that resolution to eliminate the yearly school budget, and that would not allow the taxpayers to come out and voice their opinion if the school budget was not increased by 2%, which means that the Board of Education could increase the budget by $1.6 million a year without a vote of the taxpayers. And I totally understand the reasons for it. It would make your job easier as a Board of Education, it would make my job easier as the head of a parent organization in town who goes out begging people to support the school budget, but I don't think it's the right thing to do for the taxpayers. The taxpayers should have a voice in where and how their money is spent. Just because we haven't passed a budget in our town in the last several years doesn't make it right to take away the community's right to vote. And what you're asking us to do in that resolution is to trust you, to trust that you'll do the right thing with the money. And quite honestly, with what you're about to do by opening Apple Garth School next year, it's financially irresponsible.
And thank you. Anyone else from the public? Anyone else from the public? Okay, seeing no one, we'll go to number seven, Closed Session Resolution. Be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Township of Monroe hereby moves to go into closed session in accordance with Sunshine Law, Chapter 231 of the Public Laws of 1975, NJSA 10:4-6 through 10:4-21, to discuss the following subjects: Personnel, interviews for Barkley Brook Principal; Personnel/Employee #2966; Student Matters, Harassment, Intimidation, and Bullion Incidents, #80 through 91. The discussion conducted in closed session can be disclosed to the public at such time as the matters have been resolved.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Kaufman and Mr. ...
Okay.
Mr. Tesler. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? At this time, the Board will move into closed session. At this time, the Board will reconvene into public session. Before moving on to number eight on the agenda, I believe Mr. Leary has a resolution.
Yes, give me a moment to just get organized. Got a little bit of paper floating around here. This is the resolution of the Monroe Township Board of Education. Can you all hear me? Whereas, Public Law 2012, Chapter Unknown, Senate Bill S. 3148, Assembly Bill A. 4394, authorizes a local Board of Education... What's happening here? Okay, I'll start on this line, rather than going all the way back. Authorizes a local Board of Education to adopt a resolution to move the annual school election for school board members to November during the regular general election. And whereas, the above legislation provides that if a Board of Education's annual school election is moved to November, voter approval should not be required for the Board of Education base budget, which is a budget with a proposed tax levy that does not exceed the tax levy cap. And whereas, the above legislation provides that if a Board of Education's annual school election is moved to November, voter approval shall be required for any proposal for additional funds above the school district tax levy cap. And whereas, the Monroe Township Board of Education, sometimes Board, has determined that the statutory restrictions on the local tax levy increases for annual school appropriations is appropriate and sufficient to control and maintain a thorough and efficient education for the children of Monroe Township. And whereas, the Board, consistent with budgetary requirements noted above, believes that dispensing with the annual school budget vote will save taxpayers' dollars and further the public interest. And whereas, the Board believes that school board members' elections in November will attract a far greater number of voters than typically vote in April elections. And whereas, the Board believes that the elimination of the vote on the school budget and the movement of board member elections to November is in the best interest of the Monroe Township community. And whereas, the Board understands that this decision will remain in effect for a minimum of four years pursuant to Section 1 of the aforementioned public law. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Monroe Township Board of Education that hereby determines that the election of school board members shall take place at the annual general election in November 2012, and it is further resolved that the Monroe Township Board of Education hereby eliminates the vote on its annual school budget, which shall be within the statutory cap and becomes effective in the 2011-13 budget and stated January 18th, 2012.
Is that a motion for Mr. Leary?
That is one motion, and may I have a second?
Correction on the... Are we allowed to discuss before we both? 2011 through 2013, it's effective 2012 to 2013.
Okay, correction, it's 2012 to 2013. I think you read 2011.
No, you had it right. I read 2012-2013 budget. That's what's written here, and if I said anything else, it's an error.
Okay, so it's 2012-2013.
That is correct.
Okay. Second by Mr. Kaufman. Any comments or questions from members of the Board of Education? Mr. Klein?
As I've written in the Home News, an article in the Home News and the Sentinel, I'm totally against this bill for two reasons. Number one, because the property tax, the largest part of our property taxes, are for the schools. The voters have the right to vote on the budget. It's your tax dollars, it's my tax dollars, you have a right to vote. Now, I also like the idea the way it was before, that if the budget loses, at least the Town Council is able to review it. The council has choices. One choice is, we see after reviewing a budget, it's right in line, it has nothing to cut, or they could say, which they've done in the past, cut $600,000, cut a million, or what have you. So, but, to me, taking the vote away from the people is wrong. Secondly, what I'm afraid of, yes, if we move the election for the board members to November, the Board will save money. I understand, will save about $60,000. But what I am afraid of is, not as much in our community, but I guarantee you, within the first two years of this act taking effect, you will start to see political hacks running for school boards, winning school board elections, and then starting to do exactly what goes on in the state, is start to throw, lack of a better word, throw business to their buddies. Also, by not being able to vote on the school budget, any district, any Board of Ed will have the right to increase it, in our case, over a million dollars a year. Also, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, the 2% cap does not take into account pensions, salaries, and insurance. That's above and beyond the 2% cap. So, I am, I was against the act before it was voted on, I was against the act when it was passed, the Assembly and the Senate, I was against the act as of Monday, when Governor Christie signed it, and I'm still against the act.
Mr. Gorski would like to respond to that, Mr. Klein?
Mr. Klein, if I may. Pensions, salaries, and insurance costs are all fit within the 2% tax levy cap.
That's all within the term, then I stand corrected. But I'm still against it.
Mr. Tesler?
I have nothing against the people to vote for budgets, but I think the school systems have been unfairly treated because it's the only thing we get to vote on. As a taxpayer in Monroe, I don't get to vote on a municipal budget, I don't get to vote on the county budget, I never got to vote on any improvements in the town, that was all taken out of my tax dollars without my say. So, what ends up happening is the school systems end up being picked on, we'll use the term bullied. So, I fully support this bill.
Mr. Chiarella?
This is a tough one for me, because prior to the governor signing this bill yesterday, I thought that I was for it. As a board member, I love this bill. We haven't been able to pass our budgets for the last few years, and this gives us an opportunity to not have to go through that whole process, and to have to sell the budget, and then have to worry about it getting shot down, and then what are the size of the cuts that we're gonna have to make? There's a lot of unknowns out there, and that's a nerve-wracking process. But, last night, after I found out that the governor signed it, I really thought about it, and I really started thinking about what it means to be able to vote on the budget, and what I would feel like, not as a board member, but as a taxpayer, because I haven't been a board member all that long, and my guess is eventually I'm going to be thrown out, or I'll just, or I'll die.
And that's exactly the point.
And I'll go home, and I'm gonna be, you know, just a regular taxpayer again. And I really think that the no vote on the budget sometimes are a barometer, as, you know, and I agree with you, that that is the only thing that our voters get to, that the voters get to vote on. And so, they register their discontent with government in general, sometimes with, by voting down our school budgets. But I also think that it's a barometer, and we need to listen to it, and we need to take that to heart and into consideration, and then make adjustments to those budgets, because after all, these are the people that are paying for these things, and if they're not happy with paying for those things, then our job is probably to change the way we do things. And that is, you know, with, having supported our prior budgets, I think that our Board and our administration does a great job at controlling costs and doing the right things, but that might not always be the case. And I, you know, someday I could be a taxpayer with a Board of Ed that isn't, an administration that isn't as responsible. And I want to be able to register my discontent, and I think so for that reason, I'm going to vote against this.
Two points.
Mr. Leary?
The taxpayers have another point where they can vote, their fire district in February. The second point is, we are elected. If you don't like what we do, run for office and kick us out. I have stood in 2006, where there were nine candidates for three seats. So, you got your choice. But, I will tell you, you take a look at the performance of this school district, particularly on the basis of what it costs for, per student, because we have almost damn near doubled. And then you fold in the fact that we had, number one, a 25% increase in cost of living over the period that I have been a board member, number two, that we have had a population of 89 trailers because of the finagling by our neighbor across the street, and all the, you can look at the expenses, and you can see each one of the bumps that caused by having to purchase another dozen or two dozen. And when you take a look at that, we have done a remarkably great job, and that's supported by the auditors' reports. And therefore, I am totally in support of this resolution.
Anyone else? Mr. Masters?
Those are actually good comments. I have mixed emotions about this, and it's gonna surprise me, but I actually agree with some of what Mr. Klein was saying. Some people, that's more than a big statement. I like the idea of moving the election, but I think the whole idea, the whole reason to move the election is to get people, more people out to vote, and more people involved in this, but then on the flip side, we're gonna take away the ability for them to vote on our budget. So we want more people to come out and vote, but we want them to vote on less things. That's what I see this as. And I think it's a real slippery slope when we start taking away people's right to vote, or what people can chime in on by saying that, and I don't think we would say this, we know more, or as long as we stay below some set limit, set by government, that could change, that we don't need to ask the public what they think. That's all I'm gonna say.
Mr. Leary?
I live in Rossmore. I have lived in Rossmore for 20 years. I was the president of Rossmore for three years. You take a look at the results every April, you've got a consistent pattern. All of the planned retirement communities vote no. My good friend Mark, his organization goes 80% negative, and they all vote, 36% of them come out and vote. You people who are parents, you don't come out to vote, and then that's why we have to go through the herky-jerky of going over to the Town Council. Get out and vote, or you should have, but you didn't, now we got this, and let's live with this.
That's a legal term, right, Mr. Leary? Herky-jerky.
Anyone else? Ms. Antelis?
Yeah, there have been some very good comments, but I have always been of the mindset that it really wasn't fair that we never voted on a municipal budget, or a federal budget, or a state budget, and it's really unfair to be picking on the school budget. While I do agree that it is right for people to come out and air their opinion, you can do that by voting for candidates. If you don't like what the candidate did, and you think they're overspending or wasteful, then it's up to the voters to come out and replace them, just like we do with the municipal budget. What we end up doing here is, only 15% of the population are coming out to vote, and most of them are uninformed about the budget. And why I say that, because people don't show up at the budget meetings. I have sat in a community, I've watched people vote as an observer, and seen them come to the voting booth and just say, what am I voting on, and hearing people say, just vote no. Then, we put our township officials in a precarious position by then having to cut things that they really don't know about. So now, we're putting them in an awkward position. So I think it's really time that we just combine this election, save the money, and just got rid of the budget vote.
Anyone else? Ms. Ferroni?
I have mixed emotions about this. As a Jamesburg board member for 16 years, and a Monroe rep for 15, I agree with many comments that people are not educated. I know that Jamesburg has failed 0% tax increases because it's the only thing they're allowed to vote on, and they do not come out with the knowledge of where the money is going. We have a very small budget compared to Monroe, and we work really hard to put it together and use every dime. So to have it voted down when there's no tax increase, to me, just, it shows a great lack of knowledge. And the turnout in both districts are not supportive of what the Board and the administration has done to make that process happen successfully. I know it's hard, we do not get to vote in Jamesburg on Monroe's High School, although I support the referendums, we don't get to vote on the issues that do affect our students, so I do understand that area of it. But, I think it's a complex issue, but I do agree that the Boards work very hard to give the school and the community the best for their money, and people are just not educated in that area. I don't necessarily say that I want to vote for Monroe, I may abstain, but I know it's a very difficult decision, and both sides are both viable.
Ms. Antelis?
I just wanted to add one more thing, that this is not a permanent vote, correct? This is only a four-year vote. So, after four years, if this is not working out, or the people are not happy, we're replaced, then this can be overturned.
Mr. Kaufman?
I'll be brief, I promise. Only because I haven't said anything, right? You gotta have to say something. I think for the board members that are kind of on the fence about whether or not to support this or not, a couple of things need to be considered. In the past few years, we've had failed budgets. Last year specifically, we actually came in below cap, which is something that we all kind of wrestled with, but we did do that, and the budget still failed. There's a lot of people that feel like, if we vote for this, we're kind of losing control, that we don't have control of the process anymore. That really isn't the case. In addition to being able to vote for board members, which clearly control the process, we still will be having budget reviews, we still are required to be below cap. There are checks and balances that are in place to ensure that there's not going to be excessive spending. In the previous years, as everybody knows, if you've been a frequent community member, you've seen different community members come up before the Board and challenge us on many, many, many things that are line items specific in a very thick six-inch binder of a $110, $100 and something million budget, down to items that are very, very small. So, we fully expect to be evaluated as we move forward. I would strongly recommend, given the past few years that we've had with challenges of trying to get a budget passed, and explaining in exhaustive detail why we're doing what we're doing, if we're cut any significant amount of money to the actual taxpayer, we're talking about, you're gonna be able to find uses for a couple of more cents per year. It's negligible to you, the end consumer, where us as a Board of Education, we're cutting an entire science program, or an entire educational stream, which will impact children for years. So, at the end of the day, while you may feel you have control, and we're gonna get a couple of dollars saved, you in your pocket, you're not gonna see that money. And I would urge the fact that this is a four-year commitment, that at the very least, we give this methodology a try, because what we have now is unfair to Boards of Education. As was mentioned earlier, we can all vote on Board of Education stuff, which carries the largest piece of your property tax dollar, granted, but it's not the only piece. There are other things that we have no control and no vote on whatsoever. But I'd also say, it's the biggest piece, and everybody in this room is a stakeholder, every one of you. Okay? So, I urge the ones that are kind of on the fence to rethink that and support this. If nothing else, we need to give this a four-year test run, and if it doesn't work, we reevaluate it in four years.
Anyone else? Seeing no one, we'll have a roll call, Mr. Gorski.
Ms. Antelis?
Yes.
Mr. Chiarella?
No.
Ms. Ferroni?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
No.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Mr. Masters?
No.
Mr. Tesler?
Yes.
Ms. Koloponowicz?
Yes.
Madam Board President, motion passes.
Thank you. This time, we'll go to number eight on the agenda, approval of minutes for the public meeting of October 12th, 2011. Motion and a second.
Motion.
Mr. Masters and Mr. Chiarella, any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Stand on a public meeting October 12th and closed session October 12th?
Approval of the meeting, the minutes for the meeting, the closed session meeting of October 12th, 2011? Motion and a second. Mr. Kaufman?
A second.
Mr. Klein? Comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Ms. Antelis, you're abstaining from that one, too. And Mr. Kaufman? Approval of the minutes for the public meeting of November 16th, 2011?
So moved. Second.
Mr. Tesler, Ms. Antelis, again, comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Ms. Ferroni, sustaining? Approval of the minutes for the closed session of November 16th, 2011?
Second.
Ms. Antelis, Mr. Tesler, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Ms. Ferroni? This time, we will go to the Superintendent's Report with Dr. Hamilton.
Thank you. First and foremost, I'd like to thank everyone for your calls, cards, emails, text messages, and the many, many fruit baskets that I received while I was out. It's very much appreciated to know that I was on your thoughts and prayers. And I also would like to publicly give kudos to Dr. Gorman and Mr. Gorski for carrying the ball during my absence. The district was in very good hands, and I thank you for that. Before I move into my report, I would like to ask Mike Gorski to provide an update from our Advisory Committee meeting regarding the status of Apple Garth, where we are currently, and then I'll move into my full report.
The status from the last report that the Board has given to the public is that the EPA, which regulates asbestos remediation, has issued all the applicable permits for the Apple Garth remediation project. And on Monday, the asbestos removal project had begun. Four of eight rooms are completed, and according to Mr. Tagg, all has gone well with no unexpected problems or conditions that have arisen during the process. We have a full-time monitor in McCabe Environmental Associates, and Environmental Safety Management, two separate firms monitoring the air quality at all time to check for any contaminants, and so far, I have no knowledge about any positive results from these tests. Our maintenance crew has worked very hard and has painted four classrooms, the main office, the ceilings in the 60s wing, which will precede the lighting installation. We've removed the lockers, and we're putting the old lockers up for sale. We've disconnected all the utilities at the science labs. The science labs are going to have asbestos remediation, and are gonna be left... The science labs are going to have asbestos remediation, and are going to be left with the status to be determined. Architectural and engineering, new lighting design is underway for the classrooms and hallways, and subsequent to that, we will apply for permits to the township. We will also apply for a grant through JC P&amp;L for energy-efficient lighting, which we are intending on installing through the school. Hopefully, this will pay for the majority, if not all, of the lighting projects which are currently in the 1112 budget. We also have estimates from contractors to paint the copola and to paint the exterior paint. This is going to have to be professionally done, and it will be done so through the bidding process, to ensure that the best prices are attained, and we have the most qualified vendor. Ross Hayburn Associates is doing a demographic study to determine the actual enrollment impact on the school, particularly considering the Monroe Manor contribution in the next couple of years. Design Ideas Group is also producing educational specifications for the school. This will determine the school facility's actual need based upon the educational goals set forth within the committee. County Executive Business Administrator pursuant to our invitation, Mr. John Nemeth has visited the school and has issued a report, and I beg the consideration to read a brief letter to the public and introduce it on record. It's from the State of New Jersey Department of Education, Middlesex County Office of Education, and it's addressed to Dr. Hamilton regarding Applegarth School. Dear Dr. Hamilton, I participated in a walkthrough of Applegarth School on December 20th with Mr. Gorski, Mr. Tagg, District Architect, and the District Environmental Consultant. The purpose of the visit was to review the planned asbestos removal work, assess the facility compliance with applicable safety regulations, and the renovations to open Applegarth School as a grade four and five in the 2012-2013 school years. The planned environmental project is consistent with the district's asbestos management plan and the required procedures and protocols required by the State of New Jersey for asbestos removal projects. The environmental consultant will provide an additional level of supervision and the assurance that the work is performed per bid requirements, including closeout activities. The maintenance to the instructional areas will improve classroom aesthetics and provide a sound instructional environment for students and staff. As we discussed, it is imperative that you obtain the required approvals from the local construction officials. In addition, though not required, I would recommend the district review of the egress plans from and to the original wing of the school. Please keep this office current on your project, in this project. Sincerely, John Nemeth, Executive County School Business Administrator.
Thank you for that update.
Moving on to the Superintendent's Report, the enrollment data is listed there, and I continue to call your attention to the growth in our community at 204 students in comparison from last year to this year. The out-of-district placement information is contained in your report, stable at 48 students, and our home instruction report is also listed, along with the fire drills and lockdowns at our elementary, middle, and high schools. Moving on to the Personnel Report, Madam Board President and Members of the Board of Education, it is the recommendation of the Superintendent that Personnel Items A through R be approved by roll call vote?
Second. Mr. Chiarella, Ms. Antellus, are there any questions for the Superintendent? Seeing none, we'll have a roll call.
Ms. Antellus?
Yes.
Mr. Chiarella?
Yes.
Mrs. Feroni?
Yeah.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Mr. Masters?
Yes.
Mr. Tesler?
Yes.
Ms. Koleponowicz?
Yes.
Madam Board President, Personnel Items A through R passes.
Thank you.
In addition to your current report, additional recommendation to be listed as Item S on the Personnel Report, it is recommended by the Superintendent that the Board approve Aaron Mahoney as Principal of the Barclaybrook School at a salary of $106,511.46 effective February 1st, 2012 through June 30th, 2012.
Second.
Ms. Antellus and Mr. Tesler, any comments or questions? Then we will have a roll call.
Ms. Antellus?
Yes.
Mr. Chiarella?
Yes.
Mrs. Feroni?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Absolutely.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Mr. Masters?
Yes.
Mr. Tesler?
Yes.
Ms. Koleponowicz?
Yes.
Madam Board President, motion unanimously passes.
Thank you.
And if I can pause to congratulate Ms. Mahoney.
She's a woman. We'd just like to congratulate you and welcome you to Barclaybrook, and we know you'll be a really good addition over there.
And one additional item to be listed under the Personnel Report as Item T, it is recommended by the Superintendent that the Members of the Board of Education approve the transfer of Dennis Ventrilla as Principal of Applegarth School at his current salary of $148,109.10 plus longevity effective April 1st, 2012 through June 30th, 2012.
So moved?
Second.
Ms. Antellus, Mr. Klein, comments or questions?
Just clarification about this, since this was late. How are we going to handle, we're going to post, I guess, now for Oak Tree?
That is correct. That is correct.
Okay, so we'll incur more salary, though?
Yes.
Because now, he'll be at the other school.
That is correct.
Okay.
Under the current budget.
And is just he's moving over?
For April, yes.
April till June?
Yes.
Anyone else? Roll call, Mr. Gorski?
Ms. Antellus?
Yes.
Mr. Chiarella?
Yes.
Mrs. Feroni?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Mr. Masters?
Yes.
Mr. Tesler?
Yes.
Ms. Koleponowicz?
Yes.
Madam Board President, Personnel Item passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, and congratulations to you, Mr. V.
We just better hope we don't open any more schools after this, because you keep going from one to another.
Moving on to Board Action Items, Madam Board President and Members of the Board of Education, it is recommended by the Superintendent that Board Action Items A through L be approved by roll call vote.
Mr. Chiarella?
Second.
Second by Mr. Klein. Any comments or questions for the Superintendent? If not, we'll have a roll call.
Ms. Antellus?
Yes.
Mr. Chiarella?
Yes.
Mrs. Feroni?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Mr. Masters?
Yes.
Mr. Tesler?
Yes.
Ms. Koleponowicz?
Yes.
Madam Board President, Board Action Items Eighth rail passes.
Thank you.
Additional Board Action Items, Madam Board President, for consideration, it is recommended by the Superintendent that Members of the Board of Education approve a revision to the 2011-2012 school calendar to include half-day sessions on Wednesday, February 8th, 2012, Thursday, February 9th, 2012, Wednesday, February 15th, 2012, and Thursday, February 16th, 2012, in order to provide in-service training for district teachers for the Excellent Educators for New Jersey Pilot Program for Teacher Effectiveness Evaluation System.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Chiarella, Ms. Antellus, comments or questions? Roll call, please.
Ms. Antellus?
Yes.
Mr. Chiarella?
Yes.
Mrs. Feroni?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Mr. Masters?
Yes.
Mr. Tesler?
Yes.
Ms. Koleponowicz?
Yes.
Madam Board President, Board Action Items for Half Days passes.
Thank you.
Item N to be included under Board Action Items, it is recommended by the Superintendent that Members of the Board of Education authorize the Superintendent of Schools and the School Business Administrator Board Secretary to explore the creation of an in-house employee childcare center.
Mr. Masters, Mr. Chiarella, comments or questions? Mr. Chiarella?
I just want to say that I think this is an excellent idea, and I know we're just exploring it, but we talked about it at the Buildings, Grounds, and Transportation Meeting, and I just think it's a wonderful idea, and I'm happy to be a part of this exploration.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Klein?
As we mentioned in the committee meeting, my daughter works as an occupational therapist in Stewartsville School System, and they have it, and her cost is $600 for her daughter, whereas she was paying $1,200 for kids, for the two kids, and one of them now started kindergarten, so that's saved. But I think it's a win-win situation for our district and for the staff.
Anyone else? Roll call, Mr.-
Wait, one moment. Is there any cost to this?
The exploration, there may be an application fee that we may need to incur, which I suspect will be minimal, but I don't anticipate incurring any additional costs. If that should happen, I will come back to the Board and seek authorization for that.
Roll call.
Ms. Antellus?
Yes.
Mr. Chiarella?
Yes.
Mrs. Feroni?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Mr. Masters?
Yes.
Mr. Tesler?
Yes.
Ms. Koleponowicz?
Yes.
Madam Board President, Board Action Items for In-House Employee Childcare passes.
Thank you.
And one last item for the Superintendent's Board Action, it is recommended by the Superintendent that Members of the Board of Education authorize the Superintendent of Schools and the School Business Administrator Board Secretary to explore the creation of an in-house before-school and after-school childcare program.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Antellus, Mr. Masters, any comments or questions? Then we will have a roll call.
Ms. Antellus?
Yes.
Mr. Chiarella?
Yes.
Mrs. Feroni?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Mr. Masters?
Yes.
Mr. Tesler?
Yes.
Ms. Koleponowicz?
Yes.
Madam Board President, Board Action Items for In-House Before and After-Day School Care passes.
Thank you.
And that concludes the Superintendent's Report.
Okay, then we will go to the Business Administrators' Report, Mr. Gorski.
Madam Board President and Members of the Monroe Township Board of Education, it is recommended that Board Action Items A through P, with the exclusion of Items F and G, be approved by consent roll call.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Kaufman and Mr. Chiarella, are there any questions for Mr. Gorski?
I have a question.
Mr. Masters?
Oh, could you just explain that? What that means?
You said, "Oh," correct? Okay. May recall that about this time last year, due to favorable public municipal interest rate environment, that the Board of Education refunded the 2002 series callable bonds, it was approximately a $20 million series, saving $1.4 million of interest costs over the remaining 10-year life of the bonds. I've been, along with our financial professionals, monitoring the interest rates environment since then, and they've dramatically fallen in the last couple of weeks, creating a unique opportunity for the district to refinance all of the callable bonds within the 2004 original high school issuance. The total callable bonds in that issuance are $62,849,000. When refinanced at today's rates, that will save between $2 million and $2.5 million of interest costs over the remaining life of the bonds. So it's a prudent action at this time to refinance that series, and what you have before you is two items. One, to make application at the local finance board in Trenton for their approval on the refunding, and number two, to introduce the ordinance to the public.
Anyone-
That will be the second reading, right?
No, this is the first reading.
I know, but we will have a second reading?
Yes, by law, we're required to have a second reading, yes.
Anyone else?
That's O and P, just to clarify.
Yes. Yes.
Okay, seeing none, roll call, Mr. Gorski.
Yes.
Mr. Chiarella?
Yes.
Mrs. Feroni?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Mr. Masters?
Yes.
Mr. Tesler?
Yes.
Ms. Koleponowicz?
Yes.
Madam Board President, Board Action Items A through P, with the exclusion of F and G, passes.
Thank you very much. And that concludes your report.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. We'll go on to the Board Presidents' Report, I'm going to keep this short. Last Thursday, January 12th, we had an opportunity to have Representative Rush Holt and Dr. Susan Hildreth from the Institute of Museums and Library Services visited Oak Tree School Library. Representative Holt and Dr. Hildreth were in Monroe, visiting with librarians throughout the area. They were promoting their Skills Act, which stands for Strengthening Kids' Interests in Learning in Libraries. And approximately, they were saying approximately 9,000 public schools nationwide have lost their libraries due to budget cuts, among other things. And in New Jersey, four years ago, we had about 2,000 school librarians, and now it's down to about 1,500. So the goal of the Skills Act is to have a library in every school nationwide. Republican Holt, they spent about a half an hour mixing with the kids, visiting with the parents, and getting to see what they thought was a quality library in Oak Tree. So I believe they came away very impressed, and it was a good exposure for both Oak Tree and our district. The second thing is the EE4 New Jersey Grant, or Excellent Educators for New Jersey, is continuing its work throughout the district, piloting a new teacher evaluation system. We are one of nine districts in New Jersey selected to come up with a fair and equitable evaluation system for teachers, and to provide feedback and guidance to the New Jersey Department of Education for a statewide implementation evaluation system. The district-wide committee met yesterday to continue the conversation on what their goals are, and to discuss ongoing training for teachers, and hopefully, our district will make a positive impact on any upcoming teacher evaluation system that is put into place throughout New Jersey. And then finally, I'd like to congratulate Mr. Chiarella and his lovely wife on the birth of their beautiful new daughter, Mary. As I mentioned a few months ago, with Mr. Masters had his little son, that it was the first baby born to the Board in, I don't know how long, and now we have a second. So I hope this is not a trend of Board members having babies, so just congratulations. Sure.
I just thank you, I want to thank all of the, you know, everyone who sent congratulations, and the wonderful flowers we received today from the Board. I thought that was very nice, so thank you. And I just want, you know, look into the camera and say hello to Mary, that's my daughter's name, she was born on-
On New Year's Day.
New Year's Day, so welcome to the world, and thank you very much.
You're welcome. And she's really beautiful. We'll go on to Committee Reports, anyone have a Committee Report they'd like to talk Mr. Kaufman?
Sure. This evening, we had a Curriculum Committee Meeting. Some of the items that were discussed this evening were the chemical hygiene plan. Bonnie Burke went over the new program that we're instituting here at the high school to control how we use chemicals, how we dispose of chemicals, and how we acquire chemicals. It was very informative, and it was a very good presentation.[1669.83] Mr. Washington, head of our MIS department, also went over a new web-based locker system that will be used here in the district. If some of you are familiar with blackboard technologies that are used in colleges, this is very similar to that, where students can use this methodology to be able to post some of their work to their classroom teachers, and not having to use email. It's basically like a portal, for lack of a better term. Also Pam Garcia went over a very interesting plan that we're working, some kinks out about going to be partnering with the College of New Jersey to get some student teachers in here, to cover some gaps that we have in instruction at the Grade 1 and 2 for world languages. We're going to be looking to some of these student teachers to enhance the delivery of instructional material, which is now primarily a video-based system, to be more one-on-one with a instructor, and actually expand the amount of time spent on this item from, I believe it's 20 minutes now, to 30 minutes. So we're going to get some more instructional time at the K1 and 2, and also be able to leverage these student teachers at the high school as well. So that's it for me.
Thank you, Mr. Kaufman, anyone else? Mr. Chiarella?
Yes, we had a Buildings, Grounds, and Transportation meeting yesterday. Much of what we covered yesterday was covered today, the in-house BASK program, exploring the Employee Childcare Center. But some of the things that weren't mentioned, that I'll mention quickly here, is that we were looking at a two-year extension with a discount for the trailer at Barclaybrook, which would provide us with about a $10,000 savings over what we're currently paying, and that two-year extension would give us the ability to absorb any, you know, extra students, and provide for any future needs that we might have while we're working on Apple Garth, and going through our transitions that we're going through right now. We also looked at the configuration of Apple Garth, and there were some changes, so we were looking at the use now of seven 4th grade classrooms, five 5th grade classrooms with an estimated 25 or 26 children per classroom. And so, one of the things that we also talked about, that I know was touched on here by Mr. Gorski, was that we're doing testing, a lot of testing for asbestos in the air. One of the good things is that we've ordered extra sampling, and Dr. Lynch has been present to make sure that our air is clean, and so far, the reports have been great, so we're just going to keep up that extra sampling to make sure that we have a safe environment. And I think that's it, thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing no other committee reports, is there any other business by members of the Board of Education? Okay, oh, Mr. Masters?
The diff, the policy diff that you sent me.
The?
I'm talking to my... Basically, when I look through the policy changes, I kind of put them next to each other, and try to see what's changing by paging down and see what they want. Is there anything we could produce that diff, even for members of the public?
Yes, Mr. Masters is referring to the difference between the existing policies and the ones that are being modified or changed and presented to the board for approval. We could certainly address that at the Personnel Committee.
Policy.
Policy, excuse me, Policy Committee.
Yeah, we could do, the policies that are under revision or consideration for revision are posted on the website, we could probably do a markup version of that between the first read and second read, where that's appropriate. In other instances, it only requires one read, so we would need to come up with a protocol for that.
Anyone else? Okay, at this time, we will go to the public forum, anyone from the public wishing to speak, please come to the microphone and state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, everyone, oh, sorry, sorry. Good evening, everyone, my name's Arjo Raoul, 19 Dominic Drive, Monroe Township, New Jersey. I'm actually a senior at the high school presently, and I'm here to speak about an event that occurred two months ago, that affected all of our lives. We all applied to competitive universities such as the University of Pennsylvania, Princeton, Harvard, MIT, and while we concede that though we got rejected, some of us got deferred. Deferred, in this case, means when we applied early decision to these colleges, and these colleges did not...
Could you please speak into the microphone?
These colleges, these colleges did not... These colleges didn't admit us early decision, and they're putting us in the regular decision pool. I actually got rejected from the University of Pennsylvania, and I feel like although I admit that there are other factors that contributed to my rejection, I'll admit there sometimes admissions are fluky in that sense, but we feel that we have a beautiful school, we just participated in this iPad initiative, we have Class A teachers, we have a great Board of Education, but I feel like we could improve in some ways the importance of education in our district, school-wide, and I feel like if we improve overall the quality of education in our district, which I believe is top-notch as it is right now, but I believe that if we improve it to stay competitive with schools around us all across America, even across New Jersey, I feel like we'll be able to place our students in the future into a better position to stay competitive with other students, and get admitted into these colleges.
Do you want to reply to that?
My name is Nish Patel, and I'm from 63 Bay Hill Boulevard. Okay. While, like, we're here to try to get some change for the school system, we do admit that there are some kids in our grade that got into competitive colleges, like myself. I got into the Cooper Union in New York City, which is one of the top engineering schools in the country, but even with that, like, even though some kids got in, even to Rutgers, like, some people got full rides, we still think that it's much easier for other kids around us, like, in other schools with the different, like, say Princeton, they have a much higher chance of getting into different colleges like Princeton or the Ivy League schools, because our, the mindset that our students are here, they have in our school district, isn't the one that can be set for success. Like, for example, some kids, they don't feel like they should, they need to strive for excellence, and that's from, like, when they're in elementary school, it's not taught to them that they should try to do their best, like, they can get by with doing basically nothing and get good grades, so they don't, they're not pushed hard enough, and that's what we think should be changed in our school.
We'll comment on that.
Okay, go ahead.
My name is Sammy Offman, and I live at 8 MacFarlane Circle.
My name is Aditya Patel, and I live at 81 Jeremy Court.
And we wanted to talk about how we believe that although we have a good school district, we're not the worst, we have a long way to go in order to be the best. For example, at our, one of the townships near us, West Windsor, every year, they get
at least up to 15 to 20 kids accepted into Ivy and other competitive colleges, while on some of our best years, we only get maybe five. Like, this year, they already have up to 10 people who got accepted into Princeton and other places on full rides and scholarships.
At another school nearby, East Brunswick, they have well-documented budget problems, yet they're still, every year, they're able to place students at competitive universities. And like Aditya said, we struggle to do that every single year. How is it that they have less resources, but they can still effectively place their students at top colleges? Are we not as intelligent as the students at other colleges? No, we're just as intelligent, but like Arjo and Nish touched on, our quality, not our quality, our standard of education might be a bit lower. At these colleges, for example, they can take Calc BC and AB in one year, but we're forced to do it in two years. They can also go a step up and take multi-variable calculus. Our school doesn't even have that class. So we believe that we need to be pushed harder, and this change needs to start at the bottom. It's not just a high school thing. We need to learn from a young age, from the elementary levels, that we need to be pushed a lot harder than we already are now.
Okay. Just in a minute, Mr. Leary.
Leon Thonical from Thirishiller Lane.
Hey, I'm Jonathan Dew from 132 Pagola Avenue, and you want to start first? All right, so our topic was basically, we wanted to hone in on the teachers, and we had some good stuff to talk about, like, the AP teachers, very good, and then the honors and regular teachers, they're very good as well. And one particular key point we have is the evaluation that the school gives to each of the teachers every year. So basically, what is the evaluation? The evaluation is when one of the principals steps into the classroom and sees how the teacher is going to teach the class, and evaluate them based on how they teach and how good they are. And when is it done, basically, like, once a year? So what do we think about it? We think that, basically, actually, let me ask you a question first. So is the evaluation done randomly, or is it done, like, the principal will tell you in advance that you have the evaluation?
First of all, I really appreciate you guys coming out, I'm enjoying this immensely, and I think it would be worthwhile for the group of you that are present this evening to start a focus group with me, because I'd like to exchange some more ideas with you. But one of the things that you need to know regarding the evaluation process is we are involved in a pilot that actually will change how teachers in New Jersey, across the state, are evaluated. So the evaluation, there are certain laws that govern how evaluations take place, depending on whether or not a teacher is tenured or non-tenured. A tenured teacher does get the one a year, and a non-tenured teacher gets three a year. Some principals use a clinical supervision model, which means they conference with the teachers first, they announce when they're coming in, other times, they are completely unannounced, and by most standards, a surprise, a surprise visit. But the one thing that you should know about our district is each year, we are seeing an increase in the number of kids who are getting into the more competitive Ivy League schools, but it takes a, we have a system in place that is designed to improve the quality of education systematically over several years. So the implementation of a lot of the district initiatives, like Balanced Literacy and the Inventions Math Program that was started three years ago, it will take time for those things to catch fire, so that as those elementary youngsters move through our middle and high schools, the intent and the design of these research-based programs is that we will see kids become more competitive. Very good friends with the superintendent in West Windsor, we are quite competitive, and we call each other every year and talk about the number of kids that we got into the competitive schools, and how many got scholarships. And we are also collecting data, not just on how many kids get into colleges, but how many kids get scholarships and remain there. I am on the advisory board with ETS, which is the Educational Testing System, where we are collecting data that will help us determine not just how well our children do when they get into college, but the data that will help us determine how successful they are in the workforce after they get out of college. So there are a lot of things underway that I'd be glad to share with you in a focus group. So please make sure that, Mrs. Sweeney, Joyce, if you would, be sure to get these students' names, so that we can engage in further dialogue.
Thank you, thank you. So I guess, going back to my question, is our school doing random evaluations, or do we actually prep the teachers for the evaluations?
I did answer that.
Oh. Okay, so...
It's a combination of both, that's what I said.
Okay. So I think, or we think as a group, that the evaluation should be random at all times, because when the teachers know about the evaluation, then they sort of prep their students to, like, make them seem more up there, you know? And then they change their, change a little bit of their, the way they teach, to sort of make the principal seem like, oh, wow, this is a really good teacher, you know? And then maybe, like...
DEA.
DEA? Yeah. So anyways, what we think was basically, you know, we should have random evaluations every, for like, the 10-year, they should have one year of random evaluations, and then three years, three times a year should be random for the teachers who don't have tenure.
Thank you.
As a student here, I look to teachers as a role model of my life, and because they teach me many very good lessons that I'll be able to use constantly. But sometimes I see during random moments of time where teachers don't truly abide by the rules. As I know authoritative figures do not have to abide by the rules, because they're sometimes seen above it. But in a sense, sometimes some teachers pull out their phones in random places, and you can see them texting or something. And it's somewhat disturbing to me that these people that I respect with great, much respect, and looked for them as a role model for my life, are doing this, and it's sort of somewhat hypocritical almost in a sense to the student, and it doesn't provide a good image to them.
I would agree, thank you.
Just thank you for coming here, and it's great that you're asking the Board of Education to raise the bar for all of you, from the littlest kids up to you, so that you can have a better future and get into better colleges, so we appreciate that.
Ms. Koloponowicz?
Excuse me, we're still in public forum.
I'm Stephen Ignar, I live at 4 Allison Court.
My name is Cheyone Roychattery, and I live at 6 Pinehurst Court. As... As both John and Leon pointed out, our teachers, especially our AP teachers, are some of the best. They consistently give their students the opportunity to learn and provide them with a great sense of belonging in the class, where they keep learning and completely prepare them for the AP exam. Majority of the class, of every AP class, gets the highest score of five almost every year, and that's a good thing.
And one thing that we want to focus on is the disparity between standard classes, honors class, and AP classes. As you all probably know, honors classes receive an eight-point weighting, and AP classes receive a 10-point weighting, which is pretty close, but in reality, when it comes to the content of the classes, it's, an honors class pales in comparison to the difficulty of an AP class. Honors classes don't really amply prepare us to take AP classes, and the people who take AP classes do so to challenge themselves, to do better in, like, to get better grades, to actually learn something to prepare them for college. And another, a part that the teachers have difficulty with is where to set the bar in each of the different classes. Like, in standard classes, teachers often struggle whether to set the bar low enough where the lower average level kids can actually pass, but the smarter kids breeze on through, or if they set it high enough so that the smarter kids have to work to pass, but that leaves the lower-level kids struggling to pass. And this disparity just, it lets, they often set the bar too low, and it ends up being the smarter kids can just breeze on through without much effort. And this applies to the honors and AP classes as well, or mainly honors, not so much AP, actually. But in honors classes, depending on which one, a lot of them prepare, like, AP Physics, or honors physics, for example, prepares us for AP, it teaches us very well. But other honors courses don't really set the bar high enough for everyone to get their, like, full education, because some of them set the bar too low, so that the kids who are just barely honors-level students can pass, but the ones who are maybe AP-level students just go through really easily.
Like, especially as the next couple of students are going to bring up, the scheduling conflicts play a huge role in this, and especially with honors classes, I know a lot of us have had scheduling conflicts. We wanted to take maybe one AP class or another one, but instead, because of scheduling conflicts, we had to move down, drop down to an honors class. And there's a huge difference between the spectrum. Like, you have the AP-level kids in the classroom, whereas there are also these, the average student who maybe moved up from the lower class a year earlier, and between the two, between the top student and the lowest student, there's a huge gap, and as he said, it's hard, really hard to place the bar, which causes it to be, like, difficult for the student to do really well.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Arthi Suresh, I live at 20 Tall Oaks Drive.
Hello, my name is Bhavna Kariyala, 219 Morning Glory Drive.
Hello, my name is Paul Sturko, I live at 8 Cooper Avenue. And before I go into our topic of scheduling conflict, I would like to further support Stephen Shown, as they pointed out. Myself being an immigrant from Poland, I lived 12 years without knowing the English language, and I've been living in Monroe since 6th grade. And as I entered high school, I began with honors classes, and I didn't feel extremely challenged through these honors classes. It was up until the AP point that I felt more of a desire to challenge myself and go to a higher level. As honors class, especially English itself being my second language, it didn't really show, it didn't really give me much of a challenge, I managed to pass through, as Stephen pointed out, so I could be classified as one of those students who is not challenged in those honors classes, it manages to pass. And now, our topic is scheduling conflicts. As we look on the different admission websites, we noticed that the acquirers have many, they don't require us, but they look, they prefer, they don't prefer, but they look, sorry, they... They admire the rigor of your AP classes and of your, the difficulty of the classes that you take. Bless you.
Thank you.
And the scheduling conflict in Monroe, we noticed that most of the harder advanced AP classes are piled on 3rd block, and we can see in other high schools, they are able to take so much, many, so many more AP classes that we just can't, because it's in the same block, so...
As Paul just stated, I believe that this year, we've had some of the most serious scheduling conflicts in related to AP students. For example, AP Chemistry, AP Physics, AP Lit, AP Spanish, AP Calculus, AB, and AP Computer Science are all 3rd block, and if you take an AP Science or AP Calculus, which is double block, you're unable to take the other two classes, so you have to drop it. For example, I myself was in AP Language last year, and was unable to take AP Literature, even though I should have, because I'm in AP Chemistry. And if you go on College Board or any other college website, the first thing they look at is your transcript, and they look at what classes you have taken, and how hard you've challenged yourselves. And if the scheduling conflict, like, persists, it prevents us from taking challenging classes that are, in essence, required for top colleges such as MIT, Harvard, Yale, UPenn, and it hinders us because these other students from schools around us are taking all of these classes, and we are unable to, and we are forced to take these classes out of school. For example, as Arthi will say, she has taken Chemistry, Geometry, and AP Calculus BC out of school. Sammy, who came up before, has taken 50... Sammy, who came up before, has taken Physics out of school. Cheyone has taken Chemistry out of school. I myself took AP Biology over the summer, just this summer. And Tarika has taken Physics out of school too. And this just makes, this should not be the case because if we go to a public school, we should be given all of the opportunities to take all the classes that we need to get into top colleges without having to compensate for the differences ourselves.
Yeah, so I'd like to touch on college admissions and if you know how they work, like Bhavna mentioned, if you go on collegeboard.com, one of the top criteria that's listed under the tab that's for the Office of Admissions, the criteria that they look at, it's consistently across different schools of different levels, the rigor of your academic record. So that is the most important thing that colleges consider. So they get your transcript and what they do is they understand that different schools offer different opportunities. Some schools don't offer as many AP courses, so they can't compare apples and oranges if you go to a school that offers 16 AP courses and another student goes to a school that offers two. So they do account for that by comparing your transcript, seeing the courses that you take and comparing it to what's offered at your school. Now, that avoids the problem of comparing apples and oranges. But the problem is when we have scheduling conflicts and we aren't able to take the courses that we sign up for, the colleges don't know that we haven't taken certain courses because of scheduling conflicts. They're not, you know, that's not indicated on your transcript, that's not indicated in your guidance counselor recommendation, they don't know that. So in the eyes of the admissions officers, they may be thinking that, look at the opportunities that the school offers and look at what she's taken, she hasn't taken all the opportunities that our school offers. So given that, given the importance that the rigor of your academic record is given in college admissions and given how it's evaluated by admissions officers, scheduling is a huge problem and that really needs to be addressed. And like Bhavna said, last year we faced a problem of having over seven courses, I think, Chemistry, Physics, Literature, Spanish, Calc, Computer Science, all AP courses in the same blocks. And I think everyone here who's presented has faced a problem in the past year, they've had to sacrifice one or two courses. And the justification that guidance counselors constantly give is you have to compromise, you have to compromise. And of course, we can't always get what courses we want, but at the same time, it shouldn't be that we have to compromise every single year. I've had a scheduling conflict every single year of high school. I've had to sacrifice some, some course or another. I had to sacrifice AP US History to take AP Calculus. I had to take, I had to sacrifice AP Physics to take AP Literature. And those, you know, one or two compromises, you know, that's okay, but every year happening to a lot of people, that's, it's a problem. And another thing is that guidance counselors often say, the master list has already been created and we can't change that. I'm not sure who creates the master list, but it seems like it's not being created in the most efficient way, the way that accounts for, or that minimizes that, the number of scheduling conflicts. So I think maybe the process of creating the master list really needs to be evaluated. Maybe the students can choose their courses first and then a master list can be created based on what arrangement of classes minimizes the number of scheduling conflicts. Also, speaking of AP Calculus, I think the way that Monroe teaches calculus is very inefficient. Other schools take one block, or one class period rather, for those schools that don't have block scheduling. So they take one class period out of eight class periods to complete all of calculus. So that's AB and BC calculus for those who don't know about how calculus is taught, it's divided into AB and BC. But many schools allow students to go directly to BC. So in, and what our school does is we have to take AB and then take BC. And AB is a double block course, so two out of eight of our classes go to taking AB. So in essence, three, we're taking three times as longer than other schools to take, to learn all of calculus. And that's, that's not fair. That also contributes to the fact that we are not, we're not able to take as many rigorous courses as we should be able to take. And yeah, I think that's it. Thank you.
May I speak now?
In one minute, Mr. Leary.
All right, and to sum it all up, we have a beautiful building, we have great board members, we have great teachers, we have great students, all of us right here. I believe that everything here is in place for us to succeed and we've all taken, we've taken the right steps for us to succeed and everything's here, we just have to grasp it. And I think if, as Dr. Hamilton said, these programs are starting to get put in place and I myself didn't realize that until today, but now that I know that, I realize that the board is acting proactively to ensure that we remain competitive. And we just wanted to raise awareness because we felt that we have the best perspective on the school because we go to the school every day and we see what's going on around in the school, we see the teachers, we talk to each other and we talk to other people from other districts. And we felt that if we could raise awareness of our qualms and we could talk to you guys about how possibly we could improve the mindset that our teachers create in the school, or perhaps influencing the way elementary schools challenge their students, or perhaps overall just having an environment of academia, then I feel like we can, I feel like we can, we can improve overall. And thank you for listening, thank you for listening, thank you for taking out a half an hour, I apologize, but thank you for your time, have a good night and thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Leary, you may speak now.
Let's get around a couple of things. First and foremost, this is a comprehensive high school. It is not a specialized high school. If you, ladies and gentlemen, want to go to specialized high schools, go up and take the exam to get into the engineering and science school that's part of the VOTEC and has its campus on Middlesex County College. And there you'll have plenty of competition and you will go and work your ass off.
This is a public session, isn't it? It's not, not the board session. I don't like those comments.
Well, fine, go ahead.
Please, please sit down and we'll call on you when, when, Mr. Leary.
Wait a minute. This is the public, this is the public portion, not the board portion.
This is the public portion, yes.
And it's not the board's to talk, it's the public.
I directed Mr. Leary to ask his question.
Those kids were great, let me tell you that and you should not have made them.
I am not the main event.
Let me just say one thing.
Ms. Veroni.
I understand what you're saying, I just want to tell you kids, I commend you for taking the time to come together as a group, exchange information. I am so impressed by all of you and so proud that you came up and gave such an insightful view into your perspective. Excellent.
Mr. Klein, do you need to make a comment? Because you could take, you could take all day and I really would like to get on with the public portion.
May I make a comment?
No, Mr. Leary.
No. You don't have to say, she does, she's the chair.
Excuse me, is it going to be very short?
It'll be very short.
Very short.
Thank you. Just one, what you say about the scheduling, absolutely. Do we want more AP courses? Absolutely. Do we want the best teachers, of which we probably have many? Absolutely. Where our problem is, one of you had mentioned that East Brunswick has less resources than we have and yet they excel and they're able to get into the better schools. To your own information, they receive upwards of $14 million a year in state aid, we get 1.9 million, $291 a student. But that's not a reason to cut courses. The problem is with the amount of money that we have and the amount that we're able to raise in taxation, there's a limit to what we're able, we want to give you the best. Unfortunately, when you have a mixed population of levels of students, I'm not an educator. I don't know how, how we can reschedule it, other than doing the scheduling, like you said, instead of having it in the third block, make it where it's more assessable to all of you. But let me tell you something, you knock my pants off. I wish all our students were like you and I congratulate you. That was almost short.
All right, yeah, that is really great. Not too many people knocks his pants off. No, Mr. Leary, we're going to continue with public forum, so if there's anyone would like to come up to the microphone.
Bob Roach, 18 Muirfield Boulevard, I would just, I'm so impressed with these kids, I would like to give them another round of applause. And you know, I think Dr. Hamilton's got a problem. He's got kids coming here to a Board of Education meeting, talking about problems that should have been corrected at his level. They should never have felt that it was necessary to come here. They've raised outstanding questions and I think the board should be dealing with those issues with Dr. Hamilton. Great job, kids. Now I'll go to my mundane things because these kids were so great, I almost don't want to even talk. But very mundane, I came in here a little late, you have a great crowd, but you don't have the agenda printed up. And I saw it on the website, I didn't look. I think you should have more agenda here when the...
I believe they're in the back.
No, there's not, they're gone.
That's because we had a big crowd.
That's what I'm saying. If you have a big crowd, have a lot of agenda.
How do we know?
You've been having a big crowd for the last couple of meetings I've been here because you've had interesting, normally there's 10 of us at most, you know, but it's better to have a few extra than, than not enough.
It's right there, Paul, Al, you got him in your hand?
It's too late.
But they're there, they're there.
Sorry.
Yeah, that's the policy thing.
I'm not interested in the policy.
Can, can, can you ask your question?
Well, I'm getting questions from the board. Mr. Gorski, you talked about the new bonding, where you're converting and you're going to save 250, 2.5 million on interest. Is there a change in the, the age of the bonds? Are they, are they going to come due at the same time or are they going to be extended?
Same term, right, Mike?
We're anticipating that it's going to be the same term and the state requires that you recognize a 3% net present value savings on the refunding or it's not, it's not practical to do so. Our recognition of net present value savings in this instance is right on 4% at the current time, but it's a moving target as you know.
What was the interest rate on the old bonds?
It's variable. Every different maturity has a different interest rate, the non-colable...
So it's a group of bonds?
Beg your pardon?
It's a group of bonds, it's not just a single bond?
It's a composite of different bonds. The callable bonds have a higher interest rate than the non-callable, it's very variable and there's different maturities throughout the whole thing, ranging from as early as three years up to 29 years, I think.
But the net effect is the interest rate will be, the principal stays the same, but the interest rate was, is, the interest that you're saving is 2.5 million?
The principal was slightly increased due to the refunding costs.
How much is slightly?
In this instance, we were estimating, estimating about $400,000 and that includes bond counselor, underwriting fees...
Basically $2 million savings.
Printing of the bonds. No, the savings that I gave you were net.
Oh, net of the...
After all expenses. And again, that's between 2 million and if you wanted to be aggressive at current rates, it could be as much as $3 million in net present value savings.
Okay, thank you. Actually, and I'm also glad to see that Mr. Masters, who I voted for based on what he was promoting at the last election, that he was going to be a businessman and, and go with the attached, go as a business person, he finally voted no on something. So I want to congratulate, but besides, I also want to congratulate both of you, Mr. Chiriyala and Mr. Masters on the both of your kids. When you have grandkids, it's really going to be great. And the other thing is that I want to talk about is Mr. Kaufman. Lou, you make a nice speech, I'd like to see some factual things once in a while from you.
10 seconds.
But my, my taxes have gone up 100% in 10 years and the rest of the, the portions of the township, my tax rate has not gone up anywhere near that. So let's make sure when you're talking about what's happening, that you're, you're being factual. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public?
I have something to add to the board because I'm going to ask some questions about this next board meeting, not tonight because you wouldn't be prepared.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What I did is, it's a, it's a study, it's objective, completely objective, unbiased, based on the 2000 and, 2011 Taxpayers Guide in educational, for educational spending put out by the New Jersey State Board of Education. And it essentially compares school districts of 3,500 students or more to Monroe that are here in Middlesex County. It does it somewhat along various indicators, but as I looked at it, without drawing any conclusions, it certainly raised some questions. And to, to help you know where I will be going next month with my question, if you would look at indicator number four. Indicator number four shows that the Monroe School District spent more for classroom general supplies and textbooks than any of the other high schools in Middlesex County. I, I don't, I, I do not want any answer tonight, but I would like to know, why is it that we're spending $423 per student and East Brunswick spends $176 per student? We're spending, you know, more than double what the average is being spent, so there's got to be a logical explanation for that and I would like to hear what that is. Another indicator that raised my curiosity was number five, where we are at the top of the list and spending $417 per student for classroom purchased services. Whereas if you look at the list, most of the schools spend less than $100 per student and yet we're spending over $400 per student. There's got to be a reason for that and it does impinge on the budget, but as I said, I'd like that to be looked into so you could provide the public with an answer to that. And then finally, number 13. This is the second year in a row where Monroe is at the top of the list on extracurricular cost per pupil. And all of this data is for last year's budget, not this year's budget. But last year, we, we were averaging $338 per student, whereas out of the 12 high schools that I have listed here, the median cost is somewhere around 175. So we're almost double in extracurricular cost. Once again, I think there's a logical explanation for that.
Mr. Leary, Mr. Leary?
Okay, now, to deal with tonight's budget though, tonight's agenda, there was in the Business Administrators Report, items M and N. I don't know what those items are about. I, I think the public would appreciate some brief explanation as to what items M and N are all about because I read it and I simply couldn't make heads or tails out of it. On board action, there were items K and L. One of them deals with the high school graduation requirement. To me, that's a very, very important issue and it does tie in with what these young students have spoken about tonight. I don't know if that's a change in the graduation requirement, I don't know what it is, but I think the public would like to know exactly what does that policy mean in terms of the graduation requirement. Also, I have a question because in the packet of policies, some of them are called policies, some of them are called regulations, and I do understand the difference in those two, but then there's something else called a policy guide and I've never heard of that. So I would just like some clarification as to what that's all about. And regarding the policies, you do have a policy about school volunteers. I read it as quickly as I could because tonight was, was when we had it. And then subsequent to that is a policy about athletic volunteers. I may have missed it, but in the athletic volunteer policy, there's nothing specifically stated about a criminal background check. It is mentioned in the general volunteer part of the policy, but, but, but I do think it's quite important that that be specific... important that that be specifically mentioned for the athletic volunteers, because in many cases, a coach, an athletic director, they may only look at that specific policy and not realize you've got to have that criminal background check. Also, you approved Mr. Ventrello going to the Applegarth School, April 1. I would appreciate it, as a member of the public, knowing what the reasoning is for that, because that means he vacates Oak Tree. Applegarth does not open until September. I know there's some preparation has to be done, but if he's under a 12-month contract, I don't quite understand why we're having to transfer him as early as April the 1st. And I need a clarification, I know I've got a lot of questions, but you had a lot of stuff in this agenda. You approved a resolution to move the school elections to November. Does that go into effect this year?
Yes.
In other words, there will be no budget, no vote on a budget this year in Monroe?
Right.
And school board elections, the new members will be elected in-
November.
November. Okay, thank you. So, those are all my questions.
Okay, we'll try to answer as many as we can. I'll have Dr. Hamilton talk about Mr. Ventrello. No.
Hey, I can give a nice, simple-
Mr. Leary, I'm having Mr. Dr. Hamilton answer.
We're moving Mr. Ventrello, because there are activities, hiring, transfer staff, things that are required statutorily in terms of notification of staff members, whether they're tenured or non-tenured, that have to happen by a certain date. We also want to get parent orientations, scheduled student orientation, so that our fourth and fifth grade students, who are currently our third and fourth grade students, have an opportunity to get acclimated to the building, become familiar with staff, so we believe that this will provide us with the transition necessary to make that successful. The summer months will be allocated to those duties and responsibilities generally associated with 12-month building administrators, so we wanted to give Mr. Ventrello an opportunity to get started. So, we think this is the most proactive way to avoid not having the opportunity to get the students and staff acclimated to that building, because essentially, it's a new building.
Do you have an answer to the policy?
I can respond to some of the policy questions as best I can. Some of the policies are mandated updates, so they come from a service that we use called Strauss ESME, and some of those policies, we've been going through our policy manual and reviewing them according to their series, and updating them if they have not been appropriately updated. Our approach over the last year and a half has been pretty aggressive with updating our policies. So, where you may see a policy update, or a policy advisory, that would be something that would come from the state directly, versus one that comes from Strauss ESME. The volunteer policies and the criminal background check, those items are always up for discussion in terms of who pays for those, and whether or not we want it to, whether or not the Board wants to adopt that as a general procedure. However, the policies are posted on the website prior to the policy meeting, so that members of the community and our staff members have an opportunity to provide input prior to the Board reviewing those policies. And that happens each month, as we revisit these, this cycle. So, if you'd like an opportunity to see these policies before they reach the agenda, that would be a way to do that.
Mr. Poy, I'm going to have Mr. Gorski answer your questions in regard to the Business Administrators questions that you had.
Mr. Poy, your questions were specific to letters M and N in the Business Administrators Report, but also, related to those two items is letter L, which I'll also address, if you allow me. The state of New Jersey, under the new health insurance law, requires school districts to administer a Flex Spending Plan, also known as a Cafeteria Plan. Prior to this law, the district had enacted a premium-only 125 plan. The premium-only 125 plan is now going to be rolled into the Flex Spending Plan, and what this allows is for employees to have pre-tax treatment for required health insurance contributions, and is expanded under the Flex Spending Plan, FSA, by allowing individual employees to elect pre-tax treatment for such items as medical expenses that are out of pocket, and also childcare expenses. I specifically molded the plan to work well with our anticipated childcare initiative, so that employees would have the benefit and the option of having a prepaid debit card taken from their pay, treated pre-tax, and could satisfy the obligation for the childcare to the district with said card. Item L refers to the insurance carrier who will administer the card and keep track of the expenses, and issue checks if somebody doesn't want to use the card, and issue duplicate cards if they lose a card, and so on.
Is there anyone else from the public?
Jody Desai to Northwind Court. Dr. Hamilton, I'm glad to see you're back.
Thank you.
Mr. Shirela, I'm interested to meet your little daughter. And to these extraordinary, are you all seniors? Thank you, because you've opened my eyes to some things now that I can look to for my little children that are two and a half and five. And that leaves me to refer to letter T, Dr. Hamilton, on your report that was added in terms of Mr. V's transfer. As a parent, I support Mr. V being the principal at Applegarth. His expertise and experience, I believe, will be what this school needs. Congressman Holt visited the library at Oak Tree to showcase its effectiveness in order to support the Skills Bill. Mr. V created this environment, therefore, I fully believe that Mr. V can get Applegarth to the same place in order to remain competitive. I like that. Do I think this school should be open this year to Mr. Leary and Mr. Klein? You consistently refer to money that we do not get. Do you believe we have the money to open up this school for two grades this year, when we have, in the next couple of years, we have the ability to keep the school closed, get some money, and do it right? I firmly believe that this district has facilities in place that could take care of these overcrowding issues that we have right now. We have the trailers that can be moved in order to make those changes in a timely fashion, again, in accordance with money that we consistently hear, that we are a district that doesn't get much from the state. Again, I think that we really need to ask if we can afford it. The questions I have in terms of the classroom size, it was mentioned that we would have seven fourth grade classes and five fifth grade classes at 25 to 26 students a classroom. That seems fairly big for an entire school to be open, to have that large of a class size. My question is, shouldn't it be lower? And then, what is Oak Tree going to look like? Are those classes, class sizes going to be lower? These are just concerns. Again, as a parent, I smile upon you, because these are questions we need to ask in order for arts, future seniors to be competitive, and I want to make sure that that happens for my children. I believe that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public?
If I can just respond to, I want to speak briefly to the enrollment numbers at, anticipated numbers at Applegarth. We anticipate there'll be about 290 students going over to Applegarth. We do have somewhat of an anomaly, in terms of how we generally plan budgetarily and for class size, Oak Tree presents somewhat of an anomaly. We generally know that at first grade, there are a cluster of children that we can't anticipate, because parents elect to send their children to private kindergarten programs, so we have no way of really predicting first grade numbers. So, we do a good, try to do a good job with estimating that based on trends. However, at Oak Tree, the trends are very unusual, in that we have an influx each year in all the grades, not just first grade. So, we have to make provisions, particularly because we don't know what impact Monroe Manor will have on providing space for those youngsters. So, we do believe that our plan to open Applegarth in September will accommodate the 290 students that we anticipate, and the 25 to 26 students per class is the standard that we've used across the district, so those numbers will be comparable in all of our elementary schools.
Anyone from the public?
Hello, my name is Eric Offenberg, 48 Eddington Lane. Two quick questions. First, a clarification, I commend the Board on passing the 2% cap on the budget, and I think we're all glad that the voting is going to go away on that. In terms of the effect that's going to have on line item issues, like I believe in the past vote, in addition to the Board of Education budget, we had the one-line item on the full-day kindergarten, does that go away as well, or is it, does the township still have the ability to put in additional funding, for whatever purpose?
Anything that exceeds the cap will have to go to the public for vote.
That is what, right here in the resolution?
Or if we ask for a second question, then that would have to go to a vote.
Okay, that's good. And second question regards to full-day kindergarten. Is full-day kindergarten still under consideration in the new 2% cap budget for 2012, 2013?
No, it is not.
Okay, thanks.
Anyone else from the public?
Just a quick question for Mike Gorski. Is the budget cycle for 12 and 13 going to be the same as previous years?
Yes, that's correct, Mr. Roach. The budget cycle is going to be exactly the same. I understand, we're still going to have to have a public forum for the budget, like we've always had. The timetable for having an election due to the county office and everything's going to remain the same. The only thing absent is the required vote, if you're under the statutory 2% tax levy cap.
Okay, thanks.
Hi, my name's Karen Rapp, 44 Eldorado Way. Any idea what we're doing for the busing for Applegarth yet?
We'll be meeting with Transportation Department and developing that plan, and what impact that'll have on the routes as well.
Okay, and the classrooms that will be emptied out in Oak Tree, is that, what are we doing with those? Have we, has that been decided?
Based on the numbers that we are anticipating will be coming into Oak Tree, there won't be a lot of empty classrooms. There will, you will have the opportunity, Mr. Ventrello and I met, we do have an opportunity to reinstate art and music classrooms, but most of those other classrooms, we anticipate, will be utilized, based on the enrollment.
So, will class sizes be going down in Oak Tree, to some extent?
Will be-
Because right now, we're averaging about 24, 25.
And that's the standard we're trying to use across the district, so that all-
So, it won't be going any lower than that?
I'm going to say no at this time, but keep in mind that I don't know, because the enrollment projections are very peculiar for the Oak Tree community.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else from the public? Which one of you are speaking?
Well, I can have him say hi. Say hi. Corey Masters, now I'm Michaela Court, it's fine, Mark, I'm fine. I have two questions. One is, the self-contained special ed class going to go over to Applegarth? That's at Oak Tree now?
Say that again.
Is the self-contained special ed class going to go over to Applegarth? That's at Oak Tree now?
We have not reviewed the special ed enrollment numbers yet. The only special ed classes that we've looked at are the ones at Barclay Brook, we haven't gotten to the Oak Tree special ed yet.
Okay. My second question is, with the world languages for grades one and two, what's going to happen with the rest of this year? You're talking about student teachers coming in, is that for this year's?
We don't know what the parameters of the grant will be yet, because we're still working that out. Some of that may actually be able to start this year, most likely, most of it will start next year, depending on where the students are at the college and their course selection process.
Okay, and what's going to happen as far as the second graders going to third grade next year, to keep them up, to keep them, kept up to speed?
They have the Rosetta Program at those, at those grade levels.
Right, I understand that, but-
What we're looking to do is augment what, what the teachers feel is a substandard program currently in those primary grades.
Well, it is quite, I mean, my son's learning more from Dora the Explorer currently than, sadly, that he is, you know, when he gets home from Oak Tree, so that's why my concern is about, you know. So, is it going to be much harder for him to get to third grade? I don't want him to feel like he's missed a year of study then, if they're going to bring in, you know what I'm saying?
We have, yes, I do. We have the opportunity to be more progressive and aggressive with the Spanish lessons, with the Rosetta Stones, teachers have the flexibility to address, adjust the level based on where kids are.
Okay, thank you.
Excuse me, while we know who you are, we need your name and address.
I did. Oh, you did? Yeah. Would you like me to do it again?
We missed it.
Oh, no, I did.
Sorry. Anyone else from the public?
I didn't hear Youngfellow's name.
I didn't either. Well, he is the public.
Dennis Ventrello, principal of Witch School. I want to say thank you, you're both. Thank you, Dr. Hamilton, Madam President, and I wrote down some notes over here, and all the Board members for my appointment as principal for Applegarth Elementary School. Establishing a new school community is very exciting, and it presents lots of challenges, but as a principal, being able to use your position to help children, staff, and parents is probably one of the most rewarding of experiences. Although it saddens me to leave Oak Tree, it's reassuring to know that it's an outstanding school, with wonderful students, supportive parents, and an excellent staff. Plus, I'm just across Applegarth Road. Parents should know also the fact that as, as Applegarth will house grades four and five, many of the grades four and five teachers presently at Oak Tree came with me as we moved from Brookside School to Oak Tree School. So, I will be working with these same teachers and others as we establish and develop the students' educational programs. This level of trust and familiarity between me and the teaching staff will ensure that the transition to Applegarth will be a smooth one for the kids. Parents should also know that all the programs and resources afforded to students based upon their grade levels and needs at Oak Tree School will continue to be provided. The staff and I will keep the students' educational programs and their welfare as our number-one priority as we move through the entire transitional process. So, parents, and I want to thank you for tonight, Jody, that was very nice of you. Parents, I'm asking for your support as we move forward with the opening of Applegarth School. The Oak Tree School community and the PTA have always given up their time and efforts for the sake of the kids. We need to channel the same positive spirit as we open up Applegarth School. There's a lot of work to be done, now's the time to roll up our sleeves and work together for the sake of the kids as they transition to their new setting. So, parents, I'm counting on you. Also want to say is that I look forward to working with Dr. Hamilton and Mr. Gorsky, Mr. Tagg, as we anticipate a gradual moving in, and that was to get back to your comment, Doug, just to let you know, in beginning late spring, and continuing throughout the summer with doors officially opening in September. So, I want to say thank you again to the Board, to Dr. Hamilton, for believing in me a third time, and that I look forward to working with everyone as we open up Applegarth School.
Dennis, Dennis, this Board is really confident that if we know that anybody that, if anybody could make Applegarth into an excellent educational facility and do it well, it's you. So, we have most confidence in you. Anyone else from the public?
Hi, Chrissy Scurby, 8 Seminole Court. I wanted to reiterate what Kathy just said. As the president of the Oak Tree PTA, we know how much Dennis has done for Oak Tree. Dennis was instrumental in opening Oak Tree. He's been a wonderful, wonderful principal. I know he's going to be sadly missed at Oak Tree, but if anybody is a person to open up Applegarth, it definitely will be Mr. Ventrello. With that said, I have a couple of questions about Applegarth. I understand that the class sizes are going to be 25 to 26 students next year?
It's anticipated to be 25 to 26 students, which is-
I thought the purpose, I thought the purpose of opening Applegarth was to alleviate the overcrowding at Oak Tree. Why are we opening the building and not opening enough classrooms to bring down the class sizes to be equivalent with the other schools in the district?
Mrs. Scurby, that is the standard that the other, the other schools are using.
No, Brookside has 22 kids in a classroom.
For next year, the standard that we are using is to try to stabilize our student population in each classroom, using a standard per grade level consistent across the district.
So, you're going to increase the classes at Brookside? Right now, at Applegarth, at Oak Tree, there is a first grade class that has 28 students in it. At Barclay Brook, there's one that has 14. It is not fair for our children to be in class sizes double. You've been selling this-
But you know what, Mrs. Scurby?
We're going to open up Applegarth to reduce class sizes, and we're still being told next year, the first grade will have 22 kids in it. Well, how, what is, what is it going to be at Barclay Brook?
But when, last year, when we talked about-
Their class sizes are going down by year. Their kindergarten classes are so small this year, it's not right. You either need to open enough classrooms on our side of town to make our classes as small, or you need to redistrict. It is not going to be okay for our children to be in a class with 26 kids at Applegarth. The whole reason to open the building is to make the class sizes smaller, and they're going to be exactly the same.
Okay, are you asking questions that you'd like me to answer?
Yes, I would like to know why.
Okay, because I'm trying to, and you're talking over me. Last year, when we talked about closing Applegarth, the PTA, you represented the PTA, that there were no issues with the class size, and that that was a compromise- were no issues with the class size, and that that was a compromise you were willing to make for the school to be closed this year.
No, that is not what we said.
So now you're presenting that the class sizes are higher at Oak Tree, when you knew that that was going to be the case this year, by keeping the building... By keeping Applegarth closed.
No, we did not want to compromise our children's health last year to have them go over while you were abating asbestos. That was what we did not want to compromise.
There's no disagreement on that.
And what we were told was, when the building opened and our children were moved over, the classes would be smaller. And now you're telling us that they're not going to be smaller. It's unacceptable.
Well, if you're telling me that the classrooms are at 28, 25 or 26 is smaller.
Smaller than what?
What you just described.
The classes now are between 26 and 27 at Oak Tree. To keep them at 26, what are we doing this for? What are we doing... Why don't you move over the free trailer and save all that money? Why? You could add eight classrooms with one trailer for no cost, little cost, little... You're going to open an entire building and incur a million dollars in staff alone to run a building to have the same-sized classes? It's unacceptable. I'm sorry, it's unacceptable.
Mr. Leary, anyone else from the public? Okay, seeing no one. The next scheduled Board of Education meeting will be on Wednesday, February 15, 2012, 7:00 PM at the high school. Motion to adjourn. Mr. Kaufman, Ms. Antellus, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting adjourned.